Calling to order, the municipality of Monroeville's Citizens Night and Agenda Setting Meeting for Tuesday, May 6th. It is approximately 7:10 PM. If I'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
(Inaudible)
Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Greenshaw?
Here.
Mr. Hizzy?
Here.
Mr. Poach?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Crutt?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Biondo?
Here.
Mr. Graziani?
Here.
Mrs. Swack?
Here.
Mr. Hugus?
Here.
Mr. Sedlack?
Here.
Mr. Weldon?
Here.
Mrs. Lang?
Here.
Welcome. What a week. So I want to start with, we had a very bad storm, came through the entire region, and I want to start with commending our municipal employees that were involved, particularly Public Works, Mr. Hugus and your staff. Guys were out countless hours.
Yes, they were.
And did an amazing job, and, you know, we really have quite the response here, whether it is from Public Works, our police department. What's interesting in the timing for this month, we have two proclamations of National Police Week and National Public Works Week, and that's really good timing for what we experienced the past week. We still have some neighborhoods that are without power, I believe.
Correct.
And we still have some road closures.
No, all the roads are closed. All roads are open, except for the tail end of one small on Orchard Street, just the end of it is closed.
And we are still working through some traffic signals.
They're all powered, as of this morning.
Except for the one out front.
It is not there anymore.
It's not there.
So it doesn't count.
It does not count.
But I just want to-
We're down to 41 traffic signals.
Okay. But I just want to start by commending you and your staff. I know everyone was calling, Mr. Hugus, and just really want to give a tip of the hat to the entire department, what they did and how they got things opened up. You know, we received a lot of calls because there's, you know, obviously we can only do so much. We did a lot, but we only do so much. Ultimately, it's Duquesne Light, they're the ones that run the service for the entire municipality. If there were trees that were tangled in wires, we were not touching those whatsoever. However, if there's trees on the road and we could clear and open up a road, we were doing it. And, like I said, countless hours, and, like I said, just a really very impressive response, and we're very proud of the entire department and our employees here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're going to start our Citizens Night comment period. We always ask for residents and taxpayers, now's your chance to address council on any municipal item. I always ask you keep your comments to a five-minute timeframe. This will be your only comment period for this evening. The way the agenda is written will be, this is for the Citizens Night and for anything that is on the agenda. Next Tuesday's meeting, there will be another comment period at the start of the meeting for agenda items only, and then there will be another comment period at the end of next week's meeting for any municipal item. So this comment period is for anything, including the agenda, and I'm welcoming our tax collector, Mr. Pat Fulkerson. The floor is yours.
Why I'm here is because my name was mentioned at the last meeting, and it was mentioned about the homestead. And I'm going to give you a history of what went on with the Homestead Act. Before I start, though, I was a little disturbed about an ex-councilperson coming into my office and demanding from a clerk to write a letter saying that the homestead was not on her bill. And under duress, the lady wrote a sentence or two, and that's not proper. If somebody has a problem with ordinance or the rates or whatever, and they're not happy, they should speak either to their councilperson or to the manager upstairs, not to the tax department and listen to the gripes, because we're only there to do what you ask us to do, meaning collect the money at the rate that you establish. We don't do legislation. Anyway, that's that. The second part, I'm going to talk about the homestead. The homestead was deleted in the year 2010, and I have the ordinance that shows this.
I'll shoot.
Thank you.
We'll pass it back to-
In this ordinance, they decided, for whatever reason, they decided to delete the homestead. At that period of time, Monroeville honored the homestead. The homestead is, Allegheny County has the homestead, and the school district has its homestead, but they have it in Act 1, which means it's the gambling money that the state gives back to them. If you don't have the homestead, you do not receive this reimbursement out of your school taxes. Second part of it is, if you look at the ordinance, which is 2466, in that ordinance, it was a meeting at the end of that, 2009. In that ordinance, it was passed by a 6 to 1 majority. The only person that voted against it, and he must be wise, he must be in heaven right now, is Marshall Boone. So he's the only one that was, said no, he didn't want. Some of the players at that period of time, if you could look, there was six people who voted for Cooper, Mr. Francie, Mrs. Drumhiller, and a couple other people, all voted for this approval. And at that time, it was $15,000 off your assessment. Now, for people who don't understand, if your assessment was at $100,000, well, if you had the homestead, what Allegheny County, they would have gave you $15,000 off of that. So it would have been $85,000 that you would have paid for your millage. But not everybody got the homestead. For example, commercial people don't receive homestead. If it's residential, that's what the, you know, the homestead is all about. If you had the homestead in another state, say Florida, and you tried to get homestead up here, and Florida finds out about, they will really sock it to you down in Florida, because you really can only do it in one state. You can't piggyback off and have a homestead in Florida, or Georgia, or whatever, in Pennsylvania. So that is what it's all about. If you had the homestead this year, you would, we have about 7,400 people have homestead in Monroeville, and they would have got $100 per lot, per homestead. It would have came out to about almost three-fourths of a million, $750,000, if you had the homestead this year. Now, you do it next year, you're probably about the same amount. You don't have to wait until next year to implement, I mean, to pass the homestead, but you have to pass it through an ordinance that you would like to do the homestead. And a lot of people would love you to go back to that, but that's up to you, gentlemen. And if it comes about, it comes about. Basically, I'll take questions, whatever people would like.
The county still has the Homestead Act?
Oh, yes. And you have to have it in the school, otherwise you won't get the gambling money.
And you can only use it if you own multiple properties. On one property?
That is correct.
I think that's where the young lady was, she had multiple properties, that's why she didn't get the Homestead Act.
Right, because she got it on one, her home.
Right.
Answer me this, on a $100,000 property, what would the tax be on that with the homestead exemption?
With it?
It would be $85,000.
Yeah, 85. You would be talking-
Approximately.
I didn't come up with that question, I should have answered that before.
Well, then I'll wait until Tuesday.
Yeah, you, at $100,000, you would get $550.
$550.
Then you take $100 off of that, which would give you $450.
$450.
Any other questions for the tax collector, council?
I hope I explained it properly, I don't, you know, I went through this. If anybody's confused, or anybody, just call me and I will, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that it was back. Council hasn't done this in years, since 2010, so you're talking 15 years without the homestead.
Good information.
So, would this jive with your numbers? If we enacted it, it would be relatively about $100 savings for, on the tax bill for the Monroeville residents?
Just for 7,000 people.
For 7,400 people.
Those are qualified, because a resident had asked me this question, and I tried to do the math, and I think that's what it would end up being. If you acted, the $18,000, basically the first $18,000 of your assessment is not counted, that's how they word it.
That is-
So if you have a $500,000 assessment, it's only 18. If you have a $1 million, it's only 18 less. If you have $100,000, it's only 18.
I wish I would have lived in that million.
Does it, would it reduce the school district tax?
No.
School already has it.
Again, school takes theirs on Act 1. Act 1 is the gambling money that the state gives back. And they have to give every dollar back to the residents, and you have to have the homestead to qualify for Act 1.
Got it.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Fulkerson.
Anytime. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And we're going to consider that more of a presentation by the tax collector. We are going to get into our Citizens Night remarks and comments. Once again, this is for any municipal item, for residents and taxpayers. If you didn't sign in, please do so, and if you did, you can state your name for the record.
It's Donna Meyer, and I live at Berkeley Way.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first is, on Berkeley Way, traffic has gotten so bad, and it's really hard for us to get out of our plan. You know, we're right beside number 4 fire station. So as you come down past the fire station, there's a dip, and then you come up to where our entrance is, and then it goes down again. And it's really difficult for us to see the traffic, especially on the left as we come out. So you have to make sure that that car isn't, if you saw a white car, you want to make sure it went past you, and that was the one that was going to be down in the dip. It's very difficult. So the other day, I sat, in the morning now, like between 7:00 and 9:00, it gets really busy, and I sat for five minutes, a good five minutes, just waiting that I could get out in traffic. And I had to pick a spot that I could get out. So I don't know whether you can do anything with the lights, that between Westinghouse Drive and West Patty Lane, which is the next one down in Turnpike Gardens, if you could sync those somehow to give a relief, maybe in the morning and at dinnertime, because that's when the traffic is so bad. And then on top of it, we have that daycare that was given approval to be put in, that is up at, I guess, near the Polidora Building, it's up in that area, and that's going to create a lot of traffic with people bringing their kids back and forth. But it is hard to get out, and we've tried to, you know, have a light put there, and we were told that they could not. Laura Lee goes up into Penn View, and that's just a few hundred feet, not even a few hundred feet, maybe 50 feet away from our entrance. And then right across from us is the synagogue. So I don't know what they could do, they'd have to make that one way for people to go up Laura Lee and through, across Driftwood and back down to Penn View, then they could get out on Northern Pike. But it's becoming a real big issue. I mean, I've lived there 21 years, and it was, I won't say quiet, but relatively easy to get in and out. Now it's getting hard and more difficult. So that was my first question, if you could do something with the lights. And then the second thing was, probably about 10 or 12 years ago, we got a letter from the Turnpike saying that they were going to start widening. Now, I realize these things take years, but we got another letter recently that they were, needed to come into our property and take a look. Now, I sit up a little bit further, but my neighbors all down at the bottom of Berkeley received the letter. So I don't know if there's anything new going on, because I couldn't find anything online, and I didn't know whether you knew anything about it, but there was a rumor that got around to me that number 4 fire station was going to have to move so that they could widen. Of course, we have the bridge there, which they would have to widen too, they'd have to put a new bridge in, so, to go across the Turnpike. So that was my question. I can't find anything online, and I know that it takes them quite a while for them to, you know, start their plans and get going. I think Penn Township, that plan's like going to start in 2030 or something. So I just didn't know whether you heard anything about that item either. So those are my two questions.
At this point, I think they're just reaching out to all the property owners, but we haven't been, you know, given a global information about the whole property.
Well, they did that, like I said, 10 or 12 years ago. We all got letters that they needed to be into our property to take a look, and they did.
You said there's recent letters, you said.
Then there was one recently, like about two weeks ago.
Yeah, and we've had some early meetings regarding the fire station, and they're looking at the bridge and how things would configure, and we're still waiting to-
Okay.
-see how that works out.
And do you think there's anything you could do with the lights? Do you know of any way that they could look at those?
We can look at the surrounding lights and see if there's anything that we can do with timing, or if there's a way.
Right. Because when people go past the number 4, they step on their gas, they're coming quick. So either you have to be quick to get out, or you just have to wait until everybody goes and you could sit there forever. So, all right, thank you.
I'll leave the floor open, and we'd like to address council on any municipal item.
Two things tonight. I'm going to give the first ward counsel, then a copy of the first item, only because, Mr. Hizzy, you have constituents that live by the landfill. Okay, so that could be yours. I'm just making it known that Protect PT was conducting a community health survey for people living near the Monroeville landfill, and this information can help supplement any missing data and give health officials a look into what's going on in Pitt Karen. There have been some issues there. Any of this data will help, and that being said, Protect PT was looking for volunteers to do this. So if they're interested enough, Mr. Hizzy, I've got a protectpt.info link there, and another link down below, anyone living near the Monroeville landfill, they can also, if they go to that URL, they can take the survey right there, online. And so that's something I hope that you'll share. If anybody hears this and has questions, then at least you'll have what I gave you. The other thing has to do with, yeah, it's been a long week, it's been quite a week, six days plus, and our power came back on, very grateful, got to know a lot of neighbors. And the neighbors need to be congratulated for helping each other, because many people could not really go to a website to check for updates, they have no internet, and of course, all had no power. And I do believe the very night of Tuesday, the 29th, I saw Jamie Story on our street between Scott Drive and Shackleford, and he was very helpful in estimating even at that point, how long it could be. Beyond that, I got to thinking, this has been a good week for thinking about a lot of the stuff that is for emergency preparedness, and, you know, Monroeville, once upon a time, between 2010 and 11, had an emergency management officer, Dave Knox, he was an employee here, and he stressed the importance of NIMS. NIMS stands for National Incident Management System. NIMS training is, if you have to encapsulate it, because I got to be short, it's best practices for going across even tribal lands and municipalities and state and local across the US, and who knows if it's beyond, but it was, it provides a consistent nationwide template to enable people to work together so that they can maybe do things proactively. I consider that what happened, being that it was maybe a 15-minute thing that took out, and in our block, there was one huge pine tree that snapped in half and it affected three poles that were giving service, so that the FEMA administration put a lot of thought into this in 2004, and I thought it was a good idea, as each member of council needed to take a very basic test that was online, we all did, and everybody on council, mayor, everyone, took this test that was in the introduction to the Incident Management System. And the reason, and we were also trained, I even have part of the manual here that I was trained on here, all these sections here, that really brought us through the common language, the command structure, and so that we understood what to tell every, a single ward understood what to tell their constituents, because they had already had that training, that understanding, and that if anything could be communicated out, and I didn't really see anything like that, so that's why I consider that neighbors helped neighbors. But anybody without the internet, anybody who was infirm and, you know, couldn't get a compressor or a generator, they had to depend on people, and they may or may not have had families. I was lucky to have had a family to go over and shower, et cetera. But each member of council should attain this, and I think it has been lost. I do not see that Monroeville has been part of this for a long time. And I've said for a long time that in order for this to really be successful and for everybody to be talking, it also enables us to receive grant money, emergency management performance grants, and Homeland Security Grant, to do some of those things that would be proactive and in order for us to all have best practices for emergencies. So I would like to see NIMS training considered. You need to have one person and one person only who occupies that emergency management coordinator position. You cannot have a shared position, such as it has been for over 10 years, where you've got a chief of police doing that role. It's a dual role, it's too much for a chief of police to be two people. And I don't think NIMS guidelines would recommend, I know they wouldn't recommend it.
That's not true.
So I'm going to ask you-
That's not true.
-please look into that.
We do have, we do have an emergency management coordinator.
Yeah, but is it under, and it is part of the NIMS system, I don't think so.
Yes, we follow that. Yes, it is. And I've had that training, and I think other people up here have as well.
You may have had training, and you certainly may have.
I have.
And you may have, because of where you've come from.
We follow that as a whole municipality.
I notice everybody's interacting now, so, yeah, I don't see that, when I checked, I checked the region, and I asked who the emergency management person was, and they gave me a completely different name. They did not recognize Doug Cole. They recognized, they gave me another person's name, and that's where I started.
We know who it is.
Well, if you know who it is, maybe they don't know who it is, and that could be a problem.
Your opinion.
So I implore you to look into it and actually have common language across and everything under FEMA, and if you're able to get grants for that participation, that full participation, then that's great. But I don't see that they have recognized that, so I would ask you to please do your homework on that. Thank you.
I'll leave the floor open for public comment on any municipal item.
My name's Doug Cole, I'm the chief of police and the emergency management coordinator for the municipality of Monroeville. We are recognized by the county, I don't know who she talked to, we fulfill our obligations to the region as well as to FEMA, which is the Pennsylvania Emergency Management, as you're well aware, mayor. And then in addition, Paul Hugus and I, Eric Poach is a deputy emergency management coordinator, we're all out during the events previously, tying together all our resources and making sure that everything was covered appropriately. In addition, every municipal police officer is NIMS standard accredited because of our accreditation that we just achieved.
All the public service.
Plus, every firefighter, every EMS person, we all have that training. So just to make sure the public understands-
Thank you for clarifying that.
Quick question, chief.
Yeah, absolutely.
You mentioned that you are now accredited, is that a fact now?
It is, well, officially it's going to be in June, but we did pass accreditation, and we'll talk more about that at another time. I just wanted to bring up as part of all of that, and we had done it beforehand, it was done long before, but we finalized, we put on paper, every Monroeville police officer has gone through the training, as I am sure, every EMS provider, if you ride on an ambulance, you have to by state law, every firefighter that comes through here, you have, the juniors to start off, they have to, it may take a few months for them to get that, or the new members, but they all get NIMS training. And as you on council have all had NIMS training in some form or another, maybe not as formal, I mean, we have a lot of people that formally have it, obviously, but everybody understands what NIMS is and what national incident management systems are, and we do it to the T. And Paul Hugus with the Public Works people, we're blessed to have extra resources in Public Works, we're trying to coordinate that better with Duquesne Light in the future, as is the county, but certainly we meet all those requirements.
Thank you, chief, and excellent job this past week.
Yes.
I'll leave the floor open for public comment on any municipal item. So you're going to close the comment period, moving into our agenda-setting meeting. Tonight is not a voting meeting. Anything we're discussing now, we will be considering, or any official action will be at next Tuesday's regular council meeting. Then I do have an executive session announcement, I'll start with, the council conducted an executive session this evening, May 6th, from 6:00 PM to approximately 7:00 PM, for legal, personnel, and/or real estate matters, council legislative action, if any, will be taken at next Tuesday's, May 13th, council meeting. Two proclamations that will be going into the record, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, National Police Week, May 11th through May 17th. I'm just going to briefly read in the final resolved part of the proclamation that I do hereby designate the week of May 18th.
I must have got the public service month.
I'm on the wrong date, I'm already, I'm pushing the month ahead.
Proclamation.
Okay. I made it May 11th, let's start at May 11th. Then I'm proclaiming the week of May 11th through the 17th to be Police Week, and call upon all citizens in this community to especially honor and show our sincere appreciation for the police officers of this community by deed, remark, and attitude. I call upon all our citizens to make every effort to express their thanks to our men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and family in safety each day, and to return to our homes, knowing we are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. And I'll be signing that into the record, along with National Public Works Week will be the following week, May 18th through the 24th, that I do designate the week of May 18th through the 24th as National Public Works Week, and I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. And once again, these two things could not come at a more appropriate time for what we experienced this past week. Council moving through our agenda-setting meeting, we have minutes that we will consider for next Tuesday, the regular council meeting of March 11th, 25, April 1st, 2025, of the Citizens Night meeting, the council work session of April 1st, 25, and the regular council meeting of April 8th, 25. Any questions or additions or corrections for those minutes this month? Hearing none, the reports of the tax collections for your consideration for next week, any questions or comments, council? Thank you, hearing none. List of bills and budget transfers. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. And the payroll report for consideration for this month, any questions or comments, council? None. Very good. Once again, all these items will be considered at next Tuesday's regular council meeting. We are at number 7. We are at number seven, it's Development Applications, 25-2-SUB Laurel Highlands Surveying Company. It's a subdivision approval. Mr. Graziani, please.
Applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval pursuant to Monroeville subdivision land development ordinance number 2525 to subdivide tax parcel 746-A-368 into three lots in the R2 Single Multi-Family Zoning District. Lot 1 with an area of 0.19 acres, Lot 2 with an area of 0.19 acres, and Lot 3 with the same 0.19 acres. The property is a vacant lot along Orchard Street, and I think it might be where the road is kind of closed right now, in that general vicinity, if you're familiar with Orchard Street. The planning commission recommends approval of this application, so this will be next week.
A question.
Mr. Williams.
Are these lots all suitable to build on?
Yes.
There would be enough setback and whatever is required. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Very good. We have one motion to consider for this month. Mr. Graziani?
Yeah, next week we'll hopefully have finalized the draft agreement for the lease with the Garden City Swim and Tennis Club in the municipality, and this would delineate responsibility or the responsible party for maintaining areas of that parcel. And what, where it's at now is they, the board of the Garden City Swim and Tennis Club have reviewed it and they made a red line, you know, markup of the draft. We'll come to a final draft, and then we happen to have a solicitor has an expertise in those things, and we'll look to him to a final form before it's submitted to the council for approval.
Any questions? Hearing none, moving through our resolutions, we have three for consideration this month. Mr. Graziani?
As was discussed, municipality of Monroeville has 42 traffic signals, and some of those traffic signals go on.
Forty-one.
I'm sorry.
Previously forty-two.
Previously forty-two, oh, rest in peace.
Can I ask a question? And as many of you know, we did approve the replacement of this traffic light.
Correct.
And I know a couple people have asked me, and you and I have talked a little bit about it, but you may have some updated information, like how long the stop sign will be in place?
They will be in place until the new signal was installed. We're currently discussing the situation with PennDOT and coming up with an interim plan, but no temporary signal will be put up.
Okay, so then it was fortuitous in a sense that we ordered a new signal there, and it was already in process to get parts and get poles and everything.
Exactly what happened is what I hoped didn't happen, but it happened.
Meanwhile, the lights on Moss Side, Route 48, have been approved to be a part of a signal coordination upgrade sync up. There was a comment earlier about trying to sync up lights on Northern Pike, and quite frankly, the distance and the elevation between those two signals of West Patty Lane and Westinghouse Drive are just.
Too far.
Too far, and the elevation is such that they couldn't even see each other at any length. So that's what the challenge is, the lights kind of need to be able to see each other to be able to talk at some level. And these ones are, and we need to do an upgrade there, and we've got a grant, and we've got a match for that grant. And I apologize, you have to look at the resolution to see the amount of the grant that, or the amount of the match, but it's.
It's a $237,000 contribution. The total project is 1.2 million. This is not to be confused, remember last month, we talked about the Route 22 corridor? This is the Route 48 corridor. So by next year, we should have both corridors in a better condition.
Correct. And thank you to Jamie Story for putting all the work into you as well, making that happen. The next resolution is approving a waiver relieving the reclamation church from installing sidewalks as required by ordinance number 1016 and ordinance number 2235. As you recall, they got a site development plan to expand their parking lot area, and as they were moving towards the finish line, requested that they get a waiver to not build approximately 1,000 feet, or not, is that the length, about 1,000?
Correct.
300, okay, it's $10,000 or so at about 300 feet. So I guess representative here just wants to cover that.
Yeah, if you could state your name for the record, and then you give us that background, that'd be great.
My name's Dan Grayford, Ferengi McCarty Gray, here representing the applicant. I have a location map if you're interested to see that.
Yeah, we'll put it on a camera here. Jared, if you could.
I did, yes.
And then Dan, if you could just orient us there on the map.
Sure, so Parkway, it's the church that's right along the Parkway, we're just north of the Parkway there, 22 Turnpike and the Parkway here, and here is the church here. Old William Penn across the street from center is St. Martin's Drive, and we are off of St. Martin's Drive.
Right behind the junior high, the middle school, rather, essentially.
Correct, yes. Here is the actual site. So as was mentioned, you know, we received land development approval. The church would like you to consider allowing them to remove the sidewalk at this time. It's about 300 feet, right along St. Martin's Drive. They are the only property on the street, essentially, across the street, there are some properties, but they front Old William Penn, and they're sort of down over a slope. So they feel they're the only users of that sidewalk, and they feel they will use the sidewalk, and so they're asking if they can forego installing.
And as per ordinance, as I was saying a little bit earlier, they would be making then a contribution to our sidewalk fund, and the list of things we could be doing with the sidewalk fund is pretty long, so that's how it works.
Yep.
Any questions, council?
No.
So we'll consider this next Tuesday. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The third resolution, as many of you know, for a number of years, we pursued a bridge across the Turtle Creek at the Valley Park to connect that soccer field and skate park with the Westmoreland Heritage Trail. And preliminarily, getting the latest cost estimates, what we thought would be about a $500,000 project several years ago, because of what's gone on in the economy and a number of factors, it's a lot larger project. So the idea was, we've got about a $250,000 grant right now, and certainly from the sale of the Bel Air Pool, we have money to match that, but the cost increased more than what we expected. So we're applying for a grant that is due by the end of this month to see if we can say to the state, hey, you've helped us, it's a lot more than we thought, when we got approval for that help, can you help us a little more to clear the gap? So we'd like you to consider that next week, and that's, Paul Estock and MK have put that together.
Any questions? Very good. Moving to our ordinances, there are three to consider for this month. Mr. Ratcher, please.
First one is an ordinance to the municipality of Monroeville, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, amending ordinance number 227 to extend the recognized length of the public portion of Orchard Lane from 2,534 feet to 2,713 feet.
Council, any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Williams.
If we do this, are we required to pave that portion?
No, but it's a very poorly, you know, road. I mean, it's, it's been 50 years probably since the pavement that's there now has been put there, and nor do I think it would be eligible for liquid fuels. Ideally, of course, in the private sector develops road, we take those roads and we want to get them on a liquid fuel map. This one wouldn't meet the geometry for that. So where the road maintenance ends now is where liquid fuels recognizes the road, we would, by ordinance, be extending it to 179 feet. And if and when in some future paving program we decide to pave it, we'll cross that bridge at that time. But right now, this obligates the municipality to not. Our concern, quite frankly, is the weight of our trucks and maintenance in that road. It is not currently driven on by our trucks, and once our trucks start driving on it, because that would be the expectation, it will probably quickly deteriorate and become a problem for us.
When we take that road over, are we required to put a cul-de-sac?
If we wanted to do liquid fuels funding, that would be correct.
Is this currently a private road?
That would be correct.
So it doesn't meet our standards currently?
Correct. It's a road that maybe we believe the municipality may have been a part of paving or improving 40 or 50 years ago, but it was never adopted. And the ordinance that you have, I think, dates back to the 60s, I think, and that's the one that gives you the meets and bounds currently. Yes, thank you.
And you said that's 179 feet, correct, Alex?
179 feet would be the additional length.
I mean, you wouldn't consider that a road. It's probably, most likely, it's part of our driveway now, but.
Correct, I mean, it's extending, it would extend our public road as recognized by our ordinance, and therefore be.
I mean, we're not going to give it a specific name, it's just, it's going to be part of Orchard Road.
Yes, an extension of that.
Yeah, so whenever Orchard Road is resurfaced, that'll be resurfaced with it.
How many?
It's not a, we're not going to delineate anything between the two. It's just a continuation.
Provided we accept to do that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens.
Provided we accept to do that.
Yes, sir.
How many homes are on this 179 feet?
One.
Currently, the road is considered a private drive or a paper street?
Private drive.
Is that part of that home's property? Is that home, that parcel, is that roadway, whatever's currently there, is that part of the current parcel that?
It is not part of the parcel, it's part of the right-of-way as delineated for that subdivision plan that happened in the early 1900s.
Yes, it is a right-of-way. There's a current water line and hydrant at the end of her driveway.
On the unpaid portion of the road?
Yes.
At 179 feet, there's a hydrant right there?
Yes.
And then that home has a driveway off of that?
Yes, it goes.
Well, they, they use it as their driveway. They have a separate driveway that was installed as part of when they built the house.
Yeah, they have their own driveway. The end of that street ends, their driveway bears off to the right.
Was there one mound of dirt there at the end?
Yes.
Blockade?
Yes.
How long ago was that?
Prior to them building the home. When they built the home, the dirt was removed.
The home's not, okay, so that was, the home is.
The dirt pile was placed there so people couldn't go to the end and dump their, whatever.
Right, okay.
Is the existing driveway suitable to just be paved, or would it have to require a lot of?
Their existing driveway?
I mean, whatever that roadway.
Existing road he's requiring.
Existing private road.
Would it just be paved, or paved, or does it have to be rebuilt to improve?
I mean, it's not in the best condition. I would, I would tell you that, you know, before we, if we resurfaced that entire roadway, we'd have to evaluate it.
But you don't know currently?
In today's world, it's not in the best condition.
It ain't been touched then, since the 60s.
It was not, it was not built to municipal standards, I guess is the best way.
Mr. Story did provide, in your handouts that were provided last month, it was a number two, I think he added on the payers or less. I think he said two or less at best was what he would score that one.
It's, it's not in the best condition, but there's only one home that uses it, so it's not going to get, you know, that much use as compared to the rest of the road.
Are there storm inlets on it?
No.
Hydrant?
At the end, yes.
There's a hydrant at the end of it?
Yeah, at the end of the road, there's a fire hydrant.
Is there land that could be further subdivided, so there could be more homes put on that end of, that stub?
It's a possibility.
Could, could you do an analysis of what it would cost to bring a road up to municipal standards and pave it with the cul-de-sac?
Yes, but I don't, I don't think there'd be enough land to use, to install cul-de-sac. You'd have to acquire additional property from a private owner.
Okay, thank you.
So it should be a stub.
It's, yes, sir.
So are we currently paving the distance prior to that 170?
Yes, the road is maintained, there's a sign that's located, it says municipal, municipal maintenance ends here, and that's where we maintain it to.
And that's at that 179-foot mark?
Correct.
Before it?
Yeah.
Prior to, yes.
Okay, but we're already paving a private road?
No, 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 we are not maintaining this section, no.
Okay, and we don't plow, we don't salt?
No.
We do.
That's what generated the discussion, because we do not.
Where do we pick up garbage and recycling?
They bring it out to the road, basically, where at the end of their driveway, which is close to this line of demarcation.
Somewhat of a cul-de-sac there, where the road used to end.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
No.
Next item, Mr. Ratcher.
Next, we have an ordinance to the municipality of Monroeville, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, and acting certain truck restrictions on Jamison Lane. We do not have a draft ordinance available for this yet, because a lot of the information that we need to put into the ordinance to make it a proper document, we don't have yet. I talked to Mr. Yugus late this afternoon, we're waiting on some engineering data, and then we'll have what we need to properly put the ordinance together. So as of now, unless something comes in between now and next Tuesday, I'm going to recommend that you table that item.
Very good.
And what are we looking for, Bob?
Oh, would probably be a better.
If you read the document that was supplied to us by Mrs. Allison, establishing the signs, it requires a traffic and engineering study to be done, which is in the hands of our traffic engineer at this point, we need to have him complete it.
What would that have to do with the trucks over 45 feet?
It doesn't matter, you still got to do the traffic and engineering study and make sure that everything is warranted. They have a warrant list to make sure that you have to meet all these warrants in order to establish that by ordinance. It's not just, it's not purely because a truck is over 46 feet, there's additional things that has to meet in addition to that. Just because it's 46 feet or plus doesn't, doesn't disqualify it. It has to do with the geometry of the road, the slope of the road, things of that nature.
So we'll see, next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Very good. Next item.
An ordinance to the municipality of Monroeville, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, amending ordinance number 2779, the Monroeville zoning ordinance, to provide for text amendments to various sections of said ordinance. Mr. Wilden could probably expound on this, but basically we adopted in late 2023 a new zoning ordinance. We went from like, what, 80 pages to like 800?
About 400.
It was a big document, and as a result of that, as we've gone through it and Paul administers it, we've caught some little things that need to be corrected in some cases, or something was omitted, or something is inconsistent with something else, and he's been making a list and checking it twice. And so that's what that ordinance will be about. And attached to the ordinance as an exhibit are all the different areas that are being addressed, in case you're interested.
Any questions? Very good. Moving over to our reports of municipal staff, Mr. Ratcher, do you have anything else to add this evening?
Nothing, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, and we do appreciate your, your Public Works tie, your PennDOT tie, I think that's why you're wearing it, right?
In case the lights went out tonight, this.
We're going to follow you. You're out of here.
Everybody be able to get out.
That's great, thank you. Mr. Graziani, please.
My report is attached, just a few dates to keep in mind. Next Monday, May 12th, there'll be a candidate's form here in this room. It will be televised live and recorded. On May 20th is the spring primary election, there'll be four candidates, the odd number of the wards will be up for election, and the mayor, so there's a lot of those that are being contested, if you will, or running for, and then also the tax collector, who was here earlier. The form will be basically help facilitated by the Women's League of Voters of Pittsburgh, they're going to help us do that, and again, it'll be recorded, and it'll be done live. People are welcome to attend in person, pretty straightforward, each candidate will get a chance to introduce themselves to the community and have a couple questions that will be offered by the league. The next day, the Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run, which will begin at PNC Park on Tuesday morning, will finalize its first leg of a three-day journey to State College here in Monroeville. This has happened annually for a number of years, and a lot of our police officers will participate in that event for that final leg. And we're pretty excited, because this year, we're inviting Special Olympic athletes and their families, as well as anyone else in the community, to cheer on the runners. We don't know exactly what time they'll arrive in the community, nor when they'll finish, so we have kind of a window of time where people can watch it. You can watch it from any of the 22, Route 22 parking lots, but at the lot near the Ford dealership that is co-owned, if you will, by the former hotel and CBS and the convention center, there'll be a couple food trucks, and again, we're trying to encourage the Special Olympic athletes to see how it all works, and to recognize our wonderful officers who tirelessly give to the community and are part of that run. And again, the run that ends in Beaver Stadium a couple days later, it's pretty exciting. We have, of course, Community Day coming up on June 7th, a couple household hazardous waste cleanups that will be, you know, advertised on the website, and I think I covered most everything, but can't say enough about the Public Works, the Emergency Management Coordinator, Chief Cole, did an outstanding job. Emergency Management Coordinator, Chief Cole, did an outstanding job. We happen to be having a meeting to discuss 911 on April 29th at 5:00 p.m. And about 20 after, the power went out, and that light collapsed, and I got to watch, it was a privilege of mine to see our first responders, particularly the Public Works guys. I don't know how, did they live next door? Because they had trucks there before I got out the door, it seemed like. And what was very disturbing was not their effort, but how the public seemed to disregard driving into construction zones or active danger zones. They were rerouting vehicles here in front of the studio next door in the vape shop, and some cars chose to ignore the Public Works vehicles with their lights on and proceed to drive right through an active zone. Our guys were trying to cut the core tent steel with saws, and guys were trying to drive through it, and it was remarkable to watch, right in front of the municipal building. So our police dutifully did their job and cited two motorists who chose to ignore warnings, the law, and everything else you can imagine. And, but I can't say enough about Public Works and all that they do. That's hard work, in the middle of a storm, be trying to do that while cars are trying to drive through your work zones. So thank you to your team, and what a privilege to be able to see that. Thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Graziani. Ms. Lang, anything for this evening?
I'd just like to echo Mr. Graziani's thanks to our Public Works crew, just because a lot of them were working even though they didn't have power themselves. So they were very dedicated. And second thing I had was, Josie, Alex and I met with the department heads, and we discussed some of the capital improvement plan items for draft three. I just want to say that I think the department heads did a fantastic job in their teams at really just sitting down and not only educating us, but also, you know, making concessions where they were able to try to present you all with the most reasonable budget that we can.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hugus?
Yeah, I'm going to circle back to this, this storm after some comments here I didn't like. You know, within 30 minutes of that incident, that storm, you know, we had, we had 30 Public Works employees deployed. The Building and Engineering Department, Mr. Wilden, we went out, and we had about 10 structures that were damaged from the storm. Obviously, we talked about traffic signals real quick. You know, we had, we have 42 traffics here, it was 41. And 25 of them were totally out of power. Just didn't, you know, the power was cut to, you know, and five of them were damaged significantly, one catastrophically. You know, so in addition to deploying generators, keeping the generators running all night up until yesterday morning was a task. You know, Paul was out with the Engineering Department looking at different structures. The 911 or the dispatch center, you know, I give them kudos, they received, I know Doug has the statistics, they were receiving so many calls, we were having a trouble with them getting the calls to me, just because they were inundated. So I actually called my administrative assistant, and she went to the dispatch center and was communicating with me with their calls to me, what we found in the field to her, to try to get everything streamlined and try to make sure we captured all that information. But in totality, we received 170 calls for service just for Public Works. That wasn't just, that wasn't even for police, it's just for Public Works. So it was quite the task, and I appreciate it as all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Rock?
I do have something to say tonight. Our auditors were in, we're in this past week in beginning our audit, and hopefully they'll have their reports done by the end of June. I'll keep you updated on that.
Great. I'm sure it'll be no problem, as it typically is.
We can only hope.
Very good. Moving over to reports of our council members.
I think it's been said enough about Public Works, they did one hell of a job. All the fire departments were out working. People, we've got to be just, keep in mind, it's hit Monroeville very hard in the surrounding areas. Duke County Light's still trying to turn on power in certain areas. There's just little sections, that's the sad part about it. I was with the guys yesterday and say, this part of Lincoln, those 14 houses didn't have electricity. He looked around, he pulled the switch, they had electricity, but they were all told that that area was fully energized. So other than that, I have nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning the fire departments. We didn't mention them earlier, and you're absolutely right, they were, they were definitely out. Mr. Poach?
Five stars, Paul, you know.
Yeah, can I add one more comment?
Yeah.
Since we're talking about this?
Absolutely.
Within 20 minutes of the incident, Doug Cole met me at Public Works. We had a face-to-face meeting about this. We communicated well into the morning. It was after midnight. We had many phone calls, so to say there was no communication is wrong.
You're absolutely right, and, you know, I was speaking with you, I was speaking with Doug. We had a meeting back after the municipal building with Mr. Poach, Mr. Graziani, I mean, so it was definitely handled internally, and we do follow the National Insulin Management guidelines, absolutely, and we're proud of that, very much so. Mr. Stevenson?
Oh, I'm still here. I'm still.
I was trying. You're sorry, everybody. You're ready, you're trying. To do that, no, too, and again, five stars to Paul and the troops and the fire service as well. I mean, Paul, I guess, you know, to demonstrate the rest of the departments out there, we were having conversations 11, 12 o'clock at night on Tuesday, you know, on going in place and face to. I'm not sure everybody really comprehends the breadth and depth of that as well. I think most of those guys worked 16 hours for at least five days straight, a period of time that was on there to do that. One last slight subject change for an area to report. The council, I passed out a document that's beginning towards, as I mentioned last month, as part of the capital improvement plan, the library team has put together a group to work on what they can work on fundraising. Their main approach to improvement, building and stuff improvement is by ordinance, you know, to be mandated through fundraising. You can see some numbers we've put into the, into the draft budget, and on top of it, but I asked the second, I asked the question of the library board, I said, so if it's this amount of money up here, suppose we only get to half. And in fact, they have, they have a Plan B, too. So the group that they're working with on being able to fundraise will present, I believe, in June, at our next, I mean, not next week, but in June, so we have an idea of where we're going to go and what we can try to do on their capital improvement plan. Again, this document, the statement of need, is a longer-term summary of that. I've just passed around the council that we got from the library board and their team as well, too. So we'll look forward to that as well in June, so they can present to that. Mr. Stevenson?
Sure you don't?
Yes, I wanted to introduce him.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I just think it's important for the public to know the quality of staff that this municipality has, the people that, from Public Works, fire, police, and other personnel, including the manager and the mayor and some of the council that was out there doing this kind of thing. It's important to know that the quality of people that we have is second to none, second to none. And I thank them from the bottom of my heart for what they do, and what they're going to continue to do. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Crutt?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Adams?
I agree with all the remarks so far, especially the quality of our personnel here. We're very fortunate in this time to have what we have, and thanks to all.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
As your councilman in the sixth ward, when I see things that happen that upset me, I know it upsets you. One is this light right here by the municipal building. It's a great inconvenience, and although I don't like it, Mr. Hugus does what's right and what's legal to keep us safe, and I want to thank you for that. Even when I get a little heated with him, because I don't like something, they'll make it right or wrong. He keeps us out of jail, so I want to thank you for that.
Thanks, Paul.
I want to thank him and Public Works staff, EMS, fire departments, and our whole team for the work they did. I consider this a 200-year storm. In our lifetime, we'll probably see another one like this. I heard a limb hit my windows on my front porch, I went out and see what it was, and that 80 mile an hour wind come out and blew two more down and hit that porch, and scared me to death, I'll tell you, but it worked out good. I don't think we lost life in Monroeville, did we? Anybody know, did we lose any life in Monroeville over this?
No.
Yeah, so thank God for that, and for keeping us safe. And because there was some damage, most of it's fixable, might cost you a few bucks, but be patient with our workers. When they're out with a chainsaw, 5:00 in the morning in your backyard or in front of your house taking care of something, they're doing it for the good of the public, so just be patient with them. The other thing is the Monroeville post office. You all know that's a pet peeve of mine. Jared, if you'd put that picture up from Murraysville?
Sure. Oh, you're showing off Murraysville.
That's the snorkel boxes at Murraysville. Don't they look nice? That's like a first-rate post office. And anybody on that end of Monroeville ought to just go to this post office instead of Monroeville.
Bob's in shaming campaign.
This is the Monroeville, put one up in the Monroeville post office now. This is the Monroeville post office. They took the snorkel boxes out and they put these secure boxes in. Next picture? This is where the snorkel boxes were, okay, on that pad you see up on top there. It looks like a third-world country. That manager over there could care less. What Monroeville looks like is a first-rate borough, and we need to get his attention and hope he does something. I had a picture of the sidewalk. You ought to send him a letter and cite them for that sidewalk in the weeds. It's awful.
We did, we went down that path.
Well, let's do it again. We can't let it go. What a nice word. And I got a letter, the manager on my behalf and council sent a letter to Summer Lee, John Fetterman, and Senator McCormick, and I don't know whether they replied yet or not, but I'm not letting this go. My next step is going to be maybe get over disabled and handicapped people with signs and go down there and protest, or call Channel 11 or Channel 4. But it's just awful. You go to Turtle Creek, they got snorkel boxes, and Tuesday I'll have pictures of that. So anyhow, that's a pet peeve of mine, and why they don't work with the disabled and the seniors, anybody with disability is beyond me. I got a couple of phone numbers for you if you want to make phone calls. Michael Salon, CIA, L-O-N-E, he's the district relations manager for the post office. His number is 412-373-2513. Anybody listening, give them a call, and you'll probably get a voicemail, but leave them a message. And the other one is District Director Brandon Forbes, and his phone number is 412-216-6206. And we need to get this resolved, and they could put them secure mailboxes out there where the snorkel boxes were, and if I got to get out of my car and stumble up to them mailboxes, then I'm just going to go inside and mail my letter. So anyhow, that's all I have. Thank you.
And then Mr. Forbes, you mentioned, Mr. Forbes is actually with Summer Lee's office. Brandon Forbes.
Well, call him anyways.
You can call, absolutely.
Call him anyways.
Absolutely. Wow, very good. Wow. Mr. Viano?
I'm going to switch with Bob next week and be the rest of this term here, because I don't, I can never follow Bob here. Anyway, I can't say anything that's already, it's all already been said. Public Works did a tremendous job. We are very, very fortunate to live in a community as large as Monroeville and have the service that we get from Public Works, the police, the dispatchers, the fire departments. We're very fortunate to have really the best in the area. If you look at some of the other communities, they're still cleaning up. Ours, we're, you know, we cleaned up, you know, we are cleaned up. I mean, it's tremendous, and I'm very thankful that we've, we live in such a great community where our Public Works Fire Department, 911, police do the tremendous job that they do. And that's, that's all I have.
Well said, and they definitely shined this past week, absolutely.
Two cell, let's read my report.
And then, actually, what we'll do is just one thing, no comments, we're done. Bob, we've been this before. I just want to wish everybody a happy Mother's Day.